You are watching Access LaPorte County, Channel 97. Coming up next is the November 14th, 2022 meeting of the Long Beach Town Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www.xslaportecounty.org.
Okay, I've got 7:00 PM. So I'd like to call this meeting of the Town Council of Long Beach to order. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a minute, I gotta hit record.
Oh, yep.
Right there? Right here?
Recording in progress.
Okay.
Do I have everybody on? Before you do that, do I have everybody on here?
Yeah. I don't see anybody. It'll ding and tell you to add. Okay, opening remarks. I've just got two things I want to add to the agenda, and that is, at a point later in the meeting, I'm going to suggest an executive session regarding two topics. That's an executive session of the Town Council regarding first, the Perry Bartlett lawsuit, and secondly, employee relation or employee issues. So I will, when we get to that point, I will add that. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Town Council meeting from October the 10th.
So moved.
Is there a second? I'll second. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion to approve the special council meeting minutes of October 25th?
So moved.
I'll second that. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll make a motion to approve the executive session council meeting minutes of October 25th. Is there a second?
Second.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Police Department slash Commission slash Town Administrator Chief.
Good evening, everyone. First, I'd like to start with the Long Beach Police Department October Activity Report. We responded to 157 calls for service when compared to 149 calls for service in the previous year for a slight increase of eight calls for service. During the month, a total of eight incident reports were documented with one felony warrant arrest for fraud. There were no major incidents to report. Overall, the month was very mild as the self-initiated officer activity was slightly down. As many of you know, we were mourning the loss of Deputy Babcock. The, next, I'd like to move on to Public Works. With the Public Works, I spoke to Superintendent Tom Doff today. Just want to assure everybody that all the snowplows are put on our vehicles. We are ready for the snow. We have salt in the barns, so in case we do get the anticipated snow Tuesday and the Wednesday, the town is ready. Quick update on the leaf removal. It is going well. It is going somewhat slow, however, we are moving in our way through town. I've had a couple of complaints in recent days. One of the complaints was the vehicles were driving by and not addressing their properties and where were they headed to. Were headed to many of the hilly roads currently. I actually got educated myself today by Superintendent Doff that I wasn't aware that we need to address the hilly roads in town because any of the ones with steep inclines, we want to make sure the leaves are off of those. So our snowplows, if in case we have to get onto those roadways, have the leaves removed so we're not spinning our tires underneath them. So therefore, that's the reason why we've been bypassing some homes and moving to other areas. We did have one minor incident where one of our leaf vecs backed into a basketball court a week ago. The insurance company for our vendor has addressed that with the homeowner, was taken care of immediately, and there are no issues there. But I did just want to bring it to your attention. It was one slight mishap. Aside from that, both Superintendent Parrish and Superintendent Doff have nothing else to pass along. With that, now moving on to the exciting news. A couple of weeks ago, we started a search for a new deputy marshal. And with this search, we first opened it up to our internal part-time employees, of which we have eight part-time deputies that work for us here at the Police Department. We had two very qualified applicants that had applied for the position. The interview board had interviewed both of the applicants. We then moved on to a background investigation and therefore a recommendation from the interview board. That recommendation was to hire our current part-time deputy marshal, Matthew Farthing. Matthew is a 31-year-old male who resides here in LaPorte County. He is currently the chief marshal for the Kingsford Heights Police Department. He is an Indiana Law Enforcement Academy graduate from March of 2019. He graduated fourth in his academy class with a GPA of 96. He comes to us with lots of talent, many certifications, one of which is he is a DRE. And what a DRE is, is a drug recognition expert. It's a person that specializes in narcotics enforcement, also impaired drivers. In LaPorte County, there are only a handful of DRE-certified police officers, approximately four to six, and Matthew is one of those. He's also certified through the Reed School of Interview, and there are many other certifications that he has acquired in the past three years in the law enforcement field. Serving the Kingsford Heights Police Department, he has been serving in a management role there for the last two years. So my recommendation with what this young man brings to the town would be to start him at a starting salary of $63,000. We would also ask that we start him, we have, in our PTO policy in the handbook, we have a probationary status, we have a one-year status, and then we have a two-to-five-year vacation PTO bonus that's in there. I would recommend that we start him at two years in the two-to-five-year category. That would give him 192 hours of PTO. When you look at that with, you would use that for sick time and/or vacation time, would give him 16 days of PTO time. I would recommend that that takes effect January 1 of 2023. He would be on a probationary status for one year. He has passed the pre-screening on drug analysis that we do here locally, so all of that has come back clear. And the background recommendation as well has come back with a favorable recommendation to hire Matthew Farthing as a full-time deputy here at the Long Beach Police Department. So my recommendation would be to the council to put this up for a vote tonight, giving the salary and benefits as recommended unless there's anything you'd like to discuss or any changes.
I make the motion to what you said tonight for the salary, the benefits, and the PTO.
Any discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
At this time, I would like to introduce Deputy Marshal Matthew Farthing, ask him to join me, and then also for Clerk Perry to please come forward and read the oath of office.
I, Matthew Farthing.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the.
I do solemnly swear to support the.
Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And that I will faithfully and honestly discharge my duties.
And I will faithfully and honestly discharge my duties.
As Deputy Marshal of Long Beach.
The Deputy Marshal of Long Beach.
The Port County State of Indiana.
The Port County and the State of Indiana.
To the best of my skill and ability.
To the best of my skill and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
So what the chief didn't tell you is Matthew's also an Eagle Scout.
I am. I wanted to say a few words. I want to thank the council, and I appreciate the opportunity and honored to be up here in Long Beach. I look forward to working with the council and the community on the patrols and what I can bring to the community as well. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to just add a couple of things. What Matthew did leave off is that he was actually being headhunted by two other communities here in LaPorte County. We are very blessed that he made a commitment to us during his time serving us here in a part-time status. He has fallen in love with the Long Beach community and its residents, and I'm very happy to hear that he accepted our, you know, recommendation to be with us. And then, like I said, the other thing is, is that in the last couple of months, he has been working with us. The encounters he's had with our residents and that have been nothing but positive, and I think he's a wonderful addition to our Police Department. So thank you again.
So Bob, one other thing when we were recruiting, we had no trouble recruiting because, as we find out, and Mark's very humble, people want to come here to be, to be with our group because of all the training and Mark Swistick. So I think we need to acknowledge that.
I agree. Okay. Volunteer Fire Department, Tom Yank.
Good evening. For the, a report for the, as of October, the Fire Department has responded to 121 calls this year versus 151 a year ago. On the fireside, we have responded to 44 calls versus 36 a year ago. Our average response time is 4.5 minutes to a fire call. We have an average of nine members that show up for every fire call. On the medical side, we've responded to 77 calls this year versus 115 a year ago. Our average response time is 4.3 minutes, and we typically have at least five people on the medical side. One thing to remind the council about the medical calls is, you know, we get there in four and a half minutes. A typical ambulance is going to take three to four times as much time to come to this neighborhood, and that's if an ambulance is available. The county shares about seven or eight ambulances throughout the entire county, so you're blessed to have a team that shows up within four and a half minutes to, to any medical call, regardless of what it is. The department, as of October, has donated over 2,000 hours to the town of Long Beach. The month of October, as you mentioned, was kind of, kind of quiet here. It was actually quiet for the Fire Department. We only had five calls during the month of October. When the calendar turned over to November 1st, it's been 14 days in November, we've had 14 calls. So every day, this Fire Department is getting called out, either a medical or a fire call. So we continue to be very busy even as the, as the season has changed. I'd like to thank the Police Department for joining us in the trunk-or-treat this year. Those that were in attendance, October 31st, it was a huge success, even though the weather was poor. I'd like to thank, acknowledge Bart DiLaBarra on the Fire Department for kind of spearheading this from a Fire Department standpoint. We got a lot of positive feedback, and we expect this, this will be a, a thing that we'll do every year, kind of another annual type of tradition for the community. So thank you very much for your support. Two other things. Again, thanks for the support of buying the rescue fire support truck. We do have that now housed in the police garage as we're getting it ready for service. We have a number of bids that we're going out to get, the lighting, the sirens, the radios, and the logoing on that. We expect to have that in service very soon, and then Mark will work with you on getting the Suburban put on the market. We're, we're very interested in getting that, you know, getting our new truck into service. So thank you. One last thing, just to help the council understand the concept of mutual aid. On November 3rd, at about 2:00 in the morning, Long Beach was paged out on behalf of Michiana Shores as a backup to Michiana Shores. They were called out to an address out on Wilhelm Road out in, out in, out in the country in LaPorte County. And it turned out there was a factory that was on fire. 13 Fire Departments were called in. We eventually were called in at 2:30 in the morning to be additional manpower. So our, our process in a mutual aid is to, is to support where we can. We do not dump our entire fire station. We always leave the town of Long Beach protected, but we sent a team of five people out there to provide mutual aid support to Springfield and Center Township and 12 other Fire Departments. Our department was there for four or five hours. It's actually, I look at this as a goodwill because we also rely on the mutual aid system here in the town of Long Beach. And there are, there will be times when we will need assistance from other Fire Departments in the town of Long Beach, so I just wanted to help you understand the, the mutual aid concept, and, and it's real, and, and we participated in that. So that's all I had for the Fire Department. I think, John, we're going to transition to Fire Commission.
So the Fire Commission met on November 1st, and we had the discussion about the couple of capital purchases that we're interested in proposing to the capital, capital meeting that's going to happen on the 12th, or rather, the 5th of December, 12/5. One is the station, the fire station project, public safety building, so to speak. We had to design-build Phase 1 submittals that came in earlier in the month, and we will have on November 30th, the Phase 2 submittals, which will have more definitive information in terms of design and cost. We hope to get those in front of the capital project, or capital meeting on the 5th, as well as the Budget and Finance Committee a couple of days later, and then have a more formal presentation for the council at our December meeting for the design-build concept on that public safety building. We also talked about the fire truck purchase, and what I'd like to do, if we can, is move the deck. We have this, just got circulated now. I've, I've had some technical difficulties. I thought we could pull it up for the people at home, but we're not going to be able to do that this evening. But we, we'd like to, I think that the two Fire Chiefs in attendance are going to present to you, and you'll be able to read along. It's relatively brief, but it gives a little justification, a little bit of background on our fire truck proposal that we have before you. And again, this is just to inform you of what we're after, similar to what we did with the public vehicle, or rather, the public safety vehicle, the fire rescue vehicle, but this will be a little more definitive information for you on the truck itself that we propose, and then that way we'll have that information in front of you before that capital meeting.
And again, we're not looking for a decision this evening. This is purely informational, just to prepare for the upcoming capital meetings coming up. Just as you know, we have, our current Engine 1 is what we're looking to replace. This is a Mack truck that was, we've had since 1991. It's 31 years old. The reason we're looking to replace, obviously, is because of the age. There is a standards body that all Fire Departments adhere to called the NFPA, National Fire Protection Association. They have safety guidelines on apparatus equipment. Right now, the way the, the statutes are written with NFPA is that any truck that is over 15 years old should be considered in a backup truck. Anything that's over 25 years should be retired. We are in a situation where our truck is, is long overdue. In fact, the Fire Department has signaled to the Town Councils for the past 10-plus years in our contracts that there are impending purchases that need to come due, and this one is, is becoming urgent. It also can, can have some effect or impact on the ISO ratings, because the ISO, when you, when, when they, they question a town municipality, they do look at standards and NFPA and how you are, you are, you're managing to that. So we're very mindful of that, and we also, you know, just a 31-year-old truck, the maintenance on a truck is, you want your fire trucks to be dependable. When the bells go off, you want your truck to be able to be driving out of that fire station, be able to pump water. There are some concerns on some of the equipment as it ages and, and getting parts and, and things for the truck. So that's, you know, we, we want to replace the, the Mack, Mack truck that we have. We've done a lot of research over the last few years. As you may recall, a number of us went down to a big fire show back in April, the large FDIC to, to look at fire trucks. It's not the first time we've done this. We've done this for a couple of years now, and we met with a number of fire truck vendors over the, the course of the day, and, and since that time. And we, we really centered around a truck from a company called E1, based out of Orlando, Florida. It's called a Typhoon Pumper. We were really drawn to this, and you'll see there's pictures of the truck, and I'll tell you, the truck's actually going to be red, not going to be black. But, you know, we, we gravitated towards this truck because of its fit-for-purpose in the town of Long Beach. It has a very similar footprint to the Engine 1 that we're looking to replace. It will be able to maneuver around the roads within the town of Long Beach. It's also built for the Fire Department's just needs, you know, it's, we'll have a 500-gallon tank. We have a hydrant system here. We don't need a large tank. We're not looking to put hydraulic generators and SCBA's on this. We, we don't, and all the equipment off our existing Engine 1 will be transferred over to this engine. So, and this truck will be fully compliant with NFPA standards. The pictures in here are, again, we're showing a picture of a black truck. That's the one that was on the show floor. All of our trucks will be red, but this has got a very similar look and feel to the, the engine that we're looking to replace. And then, I guess, you know, that, that's really all I wanted to present to you is that, you know, we've been doing our research, and we found a truck which we think fits the need to the town of Long Beach, and we'll be giving John some information as we cut to the capital meeting.
One consideration, too, in terms of supply chain issues, which we've all experienced in numerous occasions, whether it's Street Department purchases or, you know, the fire gear. The order time right now, I believe Kurt can speak to this directly, but.
18 to 24 months.
It's on the order of 48 months right now, so.
18 to 24.
18 to 24? Okay, I'm sorry. Not 48, what?
18 to 24 months from the moment you sign contract. It used to be 12 months, and it's now increased up to 18 to 24 months based upon supply chain.
Will this truck fit into our existing firehouse?
That's a good question. It is, it is similar, but a little bit longer, and already the truck that's in there is almost hitting the wall. So we think it's probably going to hit the wall. Yeah, we tried to get one that would be, you know, within range. It's, it's within a, it's within a few inches, but I believe it's going to hit the wall.
This one isn't going to look near as cool on the 4th of July parade.
You know, it'll, it, you know, it, it's a sensible replacement from, from what we've looked at, and, but again, it's, you know, long overdue. We've been signaling for a while that, you know, we, you know, we've got a, we've got a very old piece of equipment, so. We want to order a business on this compressor?
We could talk about that now real quick. If, if, I guess it doesn't hurt to move it up on the agenda. It's actually on the agenda later in the day. So we have surplus SCBA equipment, and what that came about, because we replaced the compressor and the SC, the SCBA units, we got a grant for, for over $150,000, but the compressor the town purchased. And when we did that changeover to the new high-pressure equipment, the old equipment becomes surplus equipment. We did our due diligence. We went out in the marketplace and tried to determine what that equipment could potentially be worth. So we have two options. I sent an email to all of the Town Council members earlier in the month that gave you a little more detail. Essentially, we have two options. One would be, one of the equipment vendors is willing to take the compressor and the, what we call the ground tanks, which are big H cylinders, for about $1,700. That's what he says he can give, give the town for that equipment. The actual SCBA units themselves are basically scrapped. There's really no market for those. We tried to donate them to fire schools, and the local high school has a fire, a fire program, and nobody wants them because they're that old. The, the other option is to donate them to the dive team in Michigan City Fire. So the Michigan City Fire Department has a dive team, and they could take that compressor and they could fill their dive tanks with it, which would be a wonderful thing for them. We do on occasion have them assist us when we have a drowning call, so there would be some, you know, indirect benefit to the town if we did donate it to the Michigan City Fire Department dive team. So the choice for the council this evening is how we dispose of that equipment.
John, as John Wall indicated, we reached out to, when we had the compressor purchased, one of their sub-vendors, for lack of a better term, runs a side business, advises to refresh them for, just that, for SCBA, or SCBA, whatever that acronym stands for. I stay above water, so I don't do that. And I reached out to him, and he gave me that quote, which is around $1,700. However, since then, I've tried to follow up with him to give me something in writing, and he has not followed up. So I wanted the town to know that he gave me something orally over the phone, but he's not necessarily followed up, so it's technical on the table, but I can't guarantee it's still a firm offer. So I wanted the town to know that when I made this determination.
So I guess we, we could make a goodwill gesture to the city of Michigan City and probably get more mileage than $1,700 out of it, but given the current environment with some of the other issues we have with the town, that's, that's our decision right now. Keeping in mind, just like Tom mentioned earlier, in terms of mutual aid and, and, you know, cooperation with departments, just because maybe the council or the powers that be in the city here have some issues, we, we may get some benefit out of donating that. So that's probably the preference of the Fire Department, I would say, would be to donate it, but it's certainly up to the council, the disposal of that equipment.
I would make a motion, we try to sell it.
I second it.
Discussion.
So this is an alternative, then, to giving it to the Michigan City Fire Department, correct?
Yes. Any other discussion? All favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
I'm opposed.
So we'll have to.
Opposed?
I'm opposed to selling it. I'm in favor of giving it to Michigan City.
And John, you're.
I'll go with opposed as well.
Okay.
So we'll have to find out whether we can actually, what we can actually get for it formally now.
Correct.
And it, so if the, if the pleasure of the council is to, to sell it, then we'll have to pretty much take whatever comes. Is that what we're saying here? Because we, the $1,700 was the, the first blush. We may not get that for it, so.
That was the only entity that we found that had any interest in it at all.
Bob, maybe we should table it till we get it in writing from Kurt?
And before you go forward, there's procedures for deeming this surplus and perhaps putting it out for bid like we do the other things. So perhaps this vote is to finalize, have Mr. Ernst see if he can get that quote in writing and bring it back to you, and then you can make a determination, because there are procedures that you have to follow depending on what that dollar value is, too.
The only thing, obviously, we're trying to move it along because right now it's taking up space in an already overcrowded station, and we'd like to get it out of there because it's taking up one of the bays. We have to keep our Suburban outside.
And the weather is turning now, so we're, we're stuck with our only rescue vehicle sitting out in a, it's not a good situation.
So I have a question, Tom. What's the cost of the fire truck?
Cost of the fire truck? It was estimated at close to $750,000.
Okay.
You really don't know the final number until you place the order, but that's, that's what they quoted us.
Okay, ballpark number. That's all.
It's a ballpark number, and like everything else, the longer we wait, the more things could.
Just to give you an idea, two, couple, about two, three years ago, when we looked at a similar truck, it was about 20% less.
Oh, I, no, I understand.
Some of that supply chain issue, something, everything, every year, they say you got to buy it by a certain date, and they're going to see an automatic increase. And again, I've reached out to some other departments that bought trucks recently that just now, taking delivery two years later, that same truck would be 20% more if they bought it today.
Okay. So back to the things that we were thinking of either selling or donating, can you get us a cost? And then, we're going to have a special meeting, and we can.
And we can't make decisions.
Oh, we can't make decisions there. But if we have a, then that way we can get the Suburban back into the barn.
No, it won't, it won't fit, it's scrapped the state where it's at right now because it will not fit in our station.
You're talking about the Suburban?
Oh, the Suburban.
Right.
I thought you said the rescue.
No, the Suburban. So I'm back, I'm back to that, so.
Get the Suburban back in the barn.
Back to the barn, that, that's what I meant. So I just asked Mark if we had, so can you try and get us some estimates if we can actually sell it? Or for goodwill, give it to Michigan City?
I can't.
Okay.
I've reached out to him recently, and I'm hoping he gets back to me soon.
Okay. Thank you.
So councilor, is there any way we can expedite this such that if his number is anywhere approaching that number, that the council has made a decision? Or do we actually have to wait for another special meeting in order to?
Well, I, making a decision that's.
Can we say, I mean, we typically do not exceed sorts of things around here. Can we say if the equipment sells for more than $1,000?
Well, if it had value, you're not going to be able to just select a buyer, much like the scrap police cars and those other items that are just deemed, if, if it was abandoned altogether and didn't have value, you could donate it, right? But selling it, you, you open that up to the other requirements of the statutes.
Which is to get bids. Advertise it.
And plus, the Suburban's going to be sold, so hopefully we can.
Our goal is to, once we get the other rescue truck outfitted, ready for sale.
I saw the other rescue truck, truck on a mission, and I was really pleased, because I knew what it was, but it didn't have the logo on it yet.
All right, we're, we're running through the same challenges you're running through, Mark, with the, getting a supply chain.
And John, one, one thing that you may be able to do, since you're, since it was mentioned, you're going to have a, an exec session soon, maybe you want to tack a special session on that as well. That would allow you, you could always cancel it if you didn't need it, but it'll be sooner than the next meeting.
All right, let's do that. Let's do that. That way we can expedite the process.
Then hopefully Mr. Ernst will have some, they'll get back to him, or there's a determination that there isn't a market.
And maybe if the amount is as small as we're discussing, it could circumvent the bidding process, sort of thing.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, Public Works, Mary Lou.
Okay, Public Works met on, uh, we meet on the Fourth Monday. We met October twenty-fourth. We are working on the vacant lot charges and we are, had the help of Carl Sender and we're also including Chris Willby and I'll have an update on that. Uh, the street department, the old business was the Stop Seventeen Drainage. It's a work in progress and we talked about leaf pickup. And I hope everybody that listens to this or listens to the recap will remember that it started October thirty-first and the final date is December first. But in reality, you need to have your leaves out on that Sunday because they, I don't know if they start from the east to the west. They'll make one swipe through and that's it. So, um, we talked about the, the retaining wall at the water tank up here. So the, uh, Woodruff is giving us a bit on that. And other than that, that was all for the, for the Public Works.
Great. Any questions? Park Board? Joy.
Uh, the park board did not meet in, um, October and they will be meeting November twenty-second, next Tuesday. Uh, the community center, we also didn't meet, but we're planning on rescheduling that meeting. However, I did send everyone, um, the new proposed fees for the, uh, community center for the common rooms. And we're just looking for approval, if everybody has that.
Joy, do you, is that competitive with other peop, with other things or did you guys do like a little mini survey or?
We didn't do a survey. We just hadn't increased the prices in a really long time and so we just increased most of them by fifty percent.
I, I really didn't find any issue with it. Did you see it?
No.
I make a motion to approve?
I second it.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Good deal.
Thank you for doing that.
Uh, that's all I had unless you want to talk about, uh, while I'm up here, the community center park board rental agreement.
Uh, we can do that while you're here, yeah.
Yeah, I'm prepared. I've been in communication since last meeting with Chief and Joy and we have a form of agreement, which, um, Joy gave me a little more detail of the space because I'm not familiar with what's in the community center. But our thought is if you were agreeable, she would take that to the board, which is meeting next week for their final approval when the intent to, for the council to sign it next month.
And Joy, that, that agreement lines up with what we're charging private people to use it, is that right or not?
Uh, not really, but we're really have a lot more going on than someone just renting a room. So that includes the summer park program, us having, uh, first dibs on the gym and room thirteen and also our activities program. We also use the gym and room thirteen.
Okay.
And we don't pay for those separately.
So we're kind of giving the park board a deal? Is that right?
We're giving-
She's not gonna admit to that.
Well, is that, is that-
No, the park board's not really getting a deal.
No.
No?
Actually, we're, we're increasing it by three thousand dollars to help offset some of the utilities and some of the overhead.
The park board's giving the town a deal.
Yeah. I'm going from twelve thousand to fifteen thousand.
As far as the rent, I mean, I guess, just.
Yes.
Okay.
We are paying the, I mean, if, we were originally paying the exact same amount as the other renters. But then as we got involved with more activities, we offered up more money to the community center.
Okay.
Are, are we still, um, will we still have the historical room?
Historical room will be moved to room fourteen.
Which is where the principal's office was, okay.
Because Mr. Deaner's room one.
Okay.
I did find that out.
And so we'll downsize it?
It will be downsized a little. We'll have access to all of the, um, in there, all of the Bound Beachers, the, uh, photo albums from Civic, the photo album from the Beach Garden Club and stuff that we can hang in there, but we're not going to have a museum like it's set up now.
That's okay. And then are you still going to pay for the, uh, Historical Society room?
No, that's gonna, room will be, uh, available for rent as soon as we move out of there.
All right.
So the plan is to give this deal, make this offer to the park board, they approve it and it comes back to us? Is that what I'm understanding?
Just sort of the finalized, cause they haven't seen that form.
Okay.
We, uh, in fact, kind of dovetailing off of that one, uh, Chief and I've been working on updating what had traditionally been the formal lease for the rest of the tenant. So, um, while the council will generally be approving what has been there, um, the traditional lease that's the park board's first glance at it since there was nothing formal in the past.
So park board will review the lease next Tuesday and, um, we'll send it back to council.
Do we need to approve it tonight then?
No.
No.
They'll, they'll bring it back with any, that way if there's any questions or changes, we can have those done in advance. But I will, I will send out ahead of time, so they can-
And that's it? Unless you have any questions?
Isn't she on for the community center?
Uh, she already did.
Oh, okay. You got them both. Okay.
Yep. Okay, Budget and Finance, Mr. Perry.
Good evening. On Wednesday, November ninth, bright and early at eight-thirty in the morning, the Budget and Finance Committee met and, uh, we discussed the twenty-twenty-two budget. We're about where we thought we would be year-to-date. Um, couple of funds are a little overtaxed than, uh, we anticipated and mainly it was because of some larger expenses that we had, such as the cooling tower, the rescue, rescue vehicle and the police, um, vehicle. But otherwise, we are in good shape financially for twenty-twenty-two. We discussed payroll expenses to date and year-over-year. We discussed, um, some of the payroll expenses, expenses that have been attributed to my area, the, um, clerk treasure area. And we have allocated some of those expenses to various departments, uh, to be in line with what some, where some of the employees spend their time. So it's a better reflection of where everyone's budget sits, um, by allocating the time each employee spends in each area. So we discussed that. We looked at unfinished business, the, um, Lake Shore Drive Sewer Project, um, liability that's hanging out there. The twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty-three C, uh, CCMG applications. We talked about grants with Christensen, um, capital plan financing and action plan. We had a committee meeting on that after our, uh, budget and finance meeting. Um, we discussed the Lake Shore Drive Water Improvements Project. We looked at the budgeting process that we went through for, for twenty-twenty-three. It's been adopted by the state, but, um, we are still waiting for the final levy, uh, notice of final levy by the DLGF. In other words, how much tax revenue can we expect to get from, from the state? We don't have that info yet. We looked at new business, Stop Seventeen and Eighteen Drainage, preliminary engine, engineering estimate, um, refuge and, and, uh, leaf analysis, cash management. That was about it. After the meeting, we, my group and I had a, had a pretty informative meeting with, um, Horizon Bank and we looked at the, um, town's accounts and we discussed that the fact that rates are so high right now, which is bad if you're borrowing money, but, but if you have money, um, it's, it's good. And, um, we don't receive a whole lot of revenue for the money or income for the money that we have on deposit with Horizon. And we talked about different ways to restructure those funds. And, and I just received a proposal from them, uh, late this afternoon, so I'm, I'm not really prepared to present it to the town council. I think maybe we'll save it for the special meeting or the, um, uh, forthcoming special, uh, executive session. But just to cursorary look, it looks like we can possibly expect an increase of, of, uh, of, um, interest income of between sixty and eighty thousand dollars per year on the funds that we have on deposit at Horizon. So that's exciting stuff and, and, uh, when we dissect their proposal, um, hopefully we can realize that type of savings going forward. Otherwise, that's all I have.
Any questions? Human Resources, Mary Lou.
We did not meet in the month of November.
Uh, Tree Board, Ellen Lynch, are you on?
I don't see her on here and, and I didn't, we didn't, I did not go to that meeting. I wasn't there. So I, I will follow up with her.
Okay. Uh, Building Commission, that one's mine. Uh, they met on October the fourteenth. I'm just going to hit the highlights. Twenty-two eleven Oak and Wall. Larry Wall has spoken with the owners there to let them know they need to go to the BZA for a pool shed that they didn't have permission to build, that's already been built. Uh, beach stairs, that's been on the agenda for a while. Larry was going to try and talk to all the owners, although I don't think that's going to happen and we probably need to have a meeting with the owners who have what we deem to be illegal beach stairs so that they can make their cases to why they're not illegal uh, or tear them down, um, and, or be fined. Uh, twenty-two seventeen Chassleton, um, that was a home that, um, wants to build a deck. However, um, part of that deck is in the setback to, to Floramond. And then twenty-five sixteen Lake Shore Drive, uh, that's a project that Larry Wall actually is doing. And that's a property that is prone to erosion, is right next to the lake. And that is actually going to be the first time the town has involved the MS Four. MS Four is a, uh, agency of the state that monitors construction sites to make sure that the erosion is not a problem and the construction's not adding to it and that we're doing everything we can to prevent it. So actually our building commissioner will be the first contractor to have to deal with the MS Four. Uh, otherwise, that's all we've got from Building Commission. Uh, Board of Zoning Appeals, um, met. An entity called Yellow Bear Farms petition to build a thirty-three foot tall building was denied. Their next meeting is going to be on twelve-thirteen. And the Advisory Plan Commission, because we didn't have much to talk about and I was out of town, did not meet. Their next meeting is eleven-twenty-one. Uh, Building Permit and Revenue Report.
Building Permit Revenue Report for October two thousand twenty-two, twenty-five building permits were issued, uh, for a total of two million ninety thousand one hundred and seventy-eight dollars with revenue of seventeen thousand thirty-one dollars. Four electric permits issued totaling six hundred and twenty-six dollars. Three street cut permits with three hundred dollars of revenue. And October legal expenses totaling ten thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars were paid to Braji Nelson and Jane's attorneys.
So we need a motion to approve that?
I make a motion to approve those.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, now to unfinished business. MOU between the Park Board and the Town of Long Beach. Chris, or where are we at with that one?
That, that's where we just discussed with Joy and I think those are duplicate items. They're the next two.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Never mind. Okay, I was, yep. I was thinking about the property across the street. That's, that's not this. Although we, we still haven't done that yet, right? The MOU between Long Beach Country Club and the town?
Is that the memorandum of agreement?
Memorandum of understanding.
Chris, Chris and I have been communicating back and forth on it and once we get the draft completed, I'll get it over to, uh, Mr. Brennan for consideration and feedback and then bring it back to the council at some point.
Should we put that on the agenda?
For old business.
For old business?
For unfinished, I'm sorry.
Let's make sure it's on there. That's the MOU between the Town of Long Beach and the Country Club.
Okay.
Okay, uh, Community Center slash Park Board Rental Agreement, we've done that. Website proposal, Mark, anything new on that?
Yes, um, a couple of things. One, I'm, I am still not getting, um, the answers to the questions from our current vendor. So I'm going to want to ask to have this still remaining on unfinished business. But what I would like to share, and it was in front of you this evening, um, each of you received earlier today an email and then also, um, a flyer tonight that explains the Text My Gov. What this is, is they've reached out to, uh, the town here recently. It's a service that's provided to municipalities across the country. They are, um, located, uh, at least the sales rep I spoke to today on a Zoom meeting is out in Utah. Currently, the Town of Bristol recently, um, entered into a contract negotiation with them. What they can provide us is we've been kind of kicking around the idea of going to a mass email notification system, either through our website or trying to create one on our own that we could notify and better communicate with the town's residents. This particular system would allow us to text our residents. Um, they could subscribe to it through our town website. Or we could also use the current contact information that we have in the Public Works Department where we could send out a notification to the cell phone numbers that we currently have on file, allowing our residents to subscribe to this particular app. We would then be able to share information, um, annually with our residents. It could be reference a special event. It could be referencing a leaf pickup. It could be a road closure. Obviously, we wouldn't abuse the system, but it could be a benefit to us to, um, better enhance our communication with our residents. The initial setup cost to have them set up the actual system and the annual, uh, maintenance fee is thirty-seven hundred dollars for the first year. And then every year thereafter is approximately twenty-five hundred dollars annually. Um, I just would like to get some, uh, feedback from the council tonight if you'd like me to continue researching this further as I continue to research, um, alternatives to our current website provider. I am seeing that there will be an increase in our annual contract with our current website, um, carrier. And I won't know more of that until I hear back from them, probably in the month of December. But again, I would just like to, um, hear from the council tonight if we should, um, at least pursue the opportunity in getting additional information on the Text My Gov. I would also ask that you visit the Town of Bristol, their website. On their website, you'll see, um, a notification on the front homepage that explains this and allows residents to sign up also in Bristol. So, any questions?
So Mark, the advantage would be that if we sent out an alert, people's phones would ding as opposed to them having to look at their email without it.
Right.
Have one of those things for every email you get and nobody does that anymore, right?
The, the benefit to this text notification is it's instant notification to our residents. So if it's something important, they would get an instant notification where I hear from some residents, they don't check their email for, you know, three to five days and then they actually, you know, miss the event. La Porte County, through the Emergency Management Department, currently subscribes to a text app, which is called Rave. And that is only for emergency notifications. So if there's a road closure or, you know, there's anything major going on, um, like an active shooter situation in the county, bless you. Through, through the Rave system, La Porte County EMA can send out a text alert to anyone that subscribes to their particular system. This one here would be total voluntary. Um, we would use the current phone numbers that we have on file. We would send out the notification, allowing the resident to either subscribe or unsubscribe. Right now, I estimate we have seventy-five percent of our residents are providing us a cell phone number in the town hall. So this could be a better way than the email notification system for us contacting our residents. One of the caveats to this is that if we were to text them, let's say a fall newsletter, we can have a link on the text that'll say, open the below link, then it'll give you the fall newsletter. So we can share documents. So it would give them a hyperlink to any documents as well. So there, there's quite a few benefits. Um, there's also one last thing I'll bring up. So, so today during the, uh, presentation on Zoom, they had done a, um, demonstration for me and residents can actually ask questions as well. So today they asked me to put in, they gave me the phone number to text and I texted the word trash. Immediately I got a response that says recycling service is managed and provided by La Porte County Solid Waste. If they miss a pickup or for any other recycling issues, please call this number. And then it has additional information. All of this information was pulled from our website. So it allows residents to notify us of potholes. It allows them to ask questions of the town. So it's a two-way communication link between us and our residents.
And the cost was twenty-five hundred dollars a year?
About thirty-seven hundred first year.
Yeah, first year thirty-seven hundred, twenty-five hundred every year thereafter. I'm not asking the council to approve it tonight, just wanting to hear from you if, um, you feel the support is there to continue doing additional research and allowing you also the opportunity to look over this information as you were just provided it today.
My only comment would be, we've talked a little bit about trying to make an effort to flesh out the email address lists that we're operating under the town or with the town. And I think the, the history on those lists was that they were, you know, at some point they were political lists or, and then we asked some people to, to give us their emails. I think we probably ought to figure out what our saturation rate is on email addresses on our current list relative to the Public Works information database as well. I, I think this is going to be a great idea. Uh, I do think, I, I hate the thought that this is going to totally replace the emails because I think if we're looking forward right now, there's some talk about doing some things with invoicing with water and that sort of thing that might involve an email system, an email-based system. So I don't think we ought to think about this in terms of replacing email necessarily. I think it's a great system, but I think we also want to bring that up at the same time. You know what I mean? The accuracy of the lists and everything.
No, I, I agree and great points. And I think there is an app out there as well that offers, um, a mass email notification as well. Similar vendors as, um, the text. So I'm looking at finding one of them as well because I know that's going to come at a cost. And, um, hopefully I can have that information back to you in the next thirty to sixty days also.
Okay. Anybody else with any comments? Uh, Building Commission, violations, fines, fees. So Chris, I think, sent us out a, uh, proposed ordinance regarding that. And basically the idea is, is that we've had a rash of non-registered contractors working on properties in town. We're finding that a hundred dollar fine doesn't seem to dissuade anybody. Uh, the purpose of this was to find both the owner of the property and the- The purpose of this was to fine both the owner of the property and the contractor. We increased the amounts of the fine. And Chris, what you've given us basically does that, right?
It does. And just to add a little bit, the building commission has gone back and forth on this and determined, your current status is, the lowest fee was two-fifty for contractor violations and a hundred for homeowner violations, and then it gradually stepped up. So the other discussion was making sure, review of the ordinance to see if there was the ability to fine not only the homeowner, because that's who usually gets it if somebody, a non-registered contractor comes, most of the time, that's the homeowner allowing it, but whether there was authority to fine both of them. And it already existed within the ordinance. So the only thing you have in front of you is increasing the amount. With the thought process from the building commission, and again, I'm relaying their thoughts are that, you know, a hundred bucks really wasn't getting anybody's attention, and maybe five hundred won't, but that's something a little more steep. So that's what's before you. And before you go further in your consideration, as always, if you want to consider this and attempt to pass it tonight, you need an unanimous vote to consider it and pass it all in one meeting. You also have the opportunity to consider it, if you're inclined at all, on a first reading, the normal process. So I just want to remind you of how that process works.
I'd make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion. All right, let's do it. Since it has to be unanimous to pass it tonight, all in favor, raise your hand.
Well, we have to, do we have to do that, suspend the rules and all that? Is your motion, is your motion to suspend the rules and consider this tonight for passage? And if so, I think that should be your initial motion.
Okay, that's my motion. All in favor, raise your hand.
All right, so now you can consider it to pass this evening.
Now make a motion to pass this on first reading now. Raise your hand if you're in favor.
I think you could just pass it all this evening in one vote. So you can suspend your rules and vote to pass this this evening.
That's my motion.
All right.
Everybody raise your hand again. All right, we're good. So it's passed.
So then I will take care of the publication that's required. So this doesn't take effect immediately, but it has to be published to notify the general public.
Yeah. And then, Mr. Perry, I think Helen was going to get back to us regarding the fees for the building commission. Again, we felt that the fees for permits were probably too low. She was going to get back to us and let us know, you know, we can't be making money on the building department, but we can be covering our expenses. So can she get back to us? Because I haven't heard anything about how much we can raise our fees so that we don't run afoul of the SBOA.
Yes, absolutely. In allocating the expenses for some of the payroll and some of the legal fees, I think we'll be in good shape as to being able to increase our building commission fees and not be making money, so.
Yeah, what we need from her is how much? How much can we raise?
Got it, got it.
Okay.
We'll do.
Okay. Haas Engineering, private sanitary sewer on Lake Shore Drive. So I guess Haas is looking for us to say that we wouldn't be against this. I certainly don't want to go to Michigan City and ask. That's their job. I've been to Michigan City and asked once before, and I don't want to do that again. But I guess I would go on record saying that I would be in favor of this project.
Yeah, what it involves, I think, from a technical standpoint for the town is, and maybe Chris can help me with this, but essentially, we have, if we look favorably on them putting this utility in our right-ofways, because essentially, that's what they're asking for. If we're against having this project in our right-ofways, they need to hear that, because then that, in conjunction with the permissions from the other agencies, meaning state regulatory agencies in Michigan City Sanitary and the rest of them, you know, if we're against it, then that changes the complexion of the whole process. But if we're not against it, if we don't have a problem with them using our right-ofways, then we probably need to make that decision tonight, or at least give an indication of which way we want to go.
Yeah, I think giving them that indication, and I don't want to, I'm sure Mr. Haas can give a little more detail, but, you know, on the heels of recently, the Michigan City Common Council passed their ordinance that was a little more stringent and had some, I think, unintended consequences. Since then, there's been discussions. I know Mr. Haas has spoken with representatives of the Common Council, I have as well, on other matters and other clients, and they are, the Common Council is going to enter, they held a workshop last week, and they're going to entertain some changes, because their intention was to never mandate annexation of projects such as this, or this town, or the town of Trail Creek, but more so unincorporated. So there will be changes to that ordinance.
You mean they voted on an ordinance they hadn't read?
I can't speak for whatever they did, but I think that some of the feedback they got indicated to them that there were some unintended consequences. So I'll leave it there, but that is on the horizon, which, in my mind, some of the stated concerns at last month's meeting would no longer be a concern from the town's perspective, and then it's just your pleasure, whether you have any objections, as Mr. Wall summarized.
So I guess I'd make a motion that we go on record as being in favor. Do you want to add something? Tim?
Good evening. Thank you, Tim Haas with Haas and Associates, representing the six homeowners on Lake Shore Drive. Just want to let you know that this is a preliminary approval that we're seeking, and that if you approve this and then the six homeowners decide to move forward with the project, then you'd be getting very detailed plans showing specifically within the right-ofway from here to there, and that would be the formal detail. So this is just a first pass, so they can decide whether they want to move forward with the project or not to the next phase, which would be design.
Have they gotten any affirmative? Have they gotten any affirmative support from Michigan City?
Yes, yes. I have communicated with the Sanitary District, and they are, in general, in favor.
Well, we found out the hard way. It's the Common Council that ends up with the hammer.
Well, as Mr. Willoughby had just mentioned, the council came out with a new ordinance in the month of, I guess it was in October, so last month. And they, that, you could interpret that ordinance different ways, and one way of interpreting it would be that this would only be possible if these six people would disannex from Long Beach and annex into Michigan City, which is obviously not going to happen. But since then, I've spoken with members of the council, and I think, I think they're going to amend that ordinance, or actually, I think it's a resolution, to clear up the language a little bit, because I think that it was an unintended interpretation, that they didn't, they didn't mean that. So they're going to make it obvious that it doesn't apply to cases like this.
Thank you.
Just as devil's advocate, because we're talking about this particular subject tonight, will there be any thought about whether somebody else along the path of this right-ofway improvement, or rather, this project, would have the option to join the process? In other words, if adjacent homeowners down that line heading out of town had a desire, could they come to the group that is financing this thing and see whether or not they could participate? Or is that just not something that, I guess you can't answer that, probably can't answer that tonight, but I think it'd be nice if the town could hear from the group whether or not that's a possibility.
Okay.
I mean, it may be complicating it to the point where it's not even worth talking about, but I think it's something that.
Well, and some of those things may be what you negotiate, right? So right now, they're just proposing their project, but there may be things that you determine you want to see along, in exchange for the agreement for them to access, so. But I think, right now, it's just preliminary, do they even move forward, right? And giving them the vote of confidence that you're open to it.
So did we actually vote?
No. So I would make a motion that we give preliminary approval to this project. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
Good deal. Okay, second reading of the ordinance, the steep slope ordinance. This passed on first reading last month. If this passes tonight, this will have to go back to the APC, because it came from the APC, mostly because we altered the language last time. We switched a may, a shall to a may.
Correct.
And we've got that ordinance with the shall, with the may now, right, Chris? So I'd make a motion, we pass this on second reading?
So, well, we're going to vote on these changes to send back.
Oh, okay. Vote on the changes, the may to, the shall to the may. Is there a second?
I second it.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 So APC goes back to the APC, and if they are okay with it, then it's adopted. We don't have to see it again, right? Okay. Okay. Public Works ordinance, and essentially, that ordinance increases the size of the Public Works Committee from five to seven members. I think we've all had a chance to see it. I'll make a motion to pass this ordinance.
Before you go further, though, there is a question with regard to the terms. And so that draft, we can fill that in, and I don't know, based on the information I had available to me, I don't, I didn't recall if everybody had the same term initially, or if you wanted to determine what those are so that they're staggered. So you need to determine or decide as part of this, if you're inclined to increase the numbers to seven, also what those terms will be.
Could we not, Chris, use the term limitations that we've already, are using for the other committees, commissions, and boards? Based on time on that particular committee?
The new members haven't even been put on the committee yet, so we're a little bit of a trick bag.
Well, it'd be a Class C then, so they would get two consecutive four-year terms.
The point is, this is a new committee now?
I understand.
So you don't have anybody with any history, whereas you step off today. So you're going to have to assign, you're either going to have to let them all start with a full whatever you decide, or you're going to have to chop it up.
Or stagger it.
That's right. So you could choose, so that's just left open for your determination. And if you want to think about it more, again, reminding you that you don't, you could pass it on first reading and give it some thought, you could stagger them, but I think it's important for that decision to be made. If you want seven members who all have the same term and they all turn over at the same time, that works too. So that's your collective call.
I'll just jump in with a comment. I think we're going down the wrong road with a committee that large myself, but I think we were fine with five, but I know that didn't win the day last time. But I might suggest that somebody needs to figure out who it's going to be on first, who's going to be on second, unless you want them all to roll over at the same time, which doesn't seem to make sense with our.
Why don't you let me noodle on it, and I'll come back with a proposal?
I think we should do that.
All right.
So I would suggest that you pass this on first reading. I mean, if you're not ready to, that's okay. You're just going to have, if it's, if it isn't considered, you may have, you're going to have to make sure you have five members if you want to pass it in one.
Yeah, I mean, the consideration was that we were going to have to eliminate two individuals to get back to the five. I think we collectively agreed that the number of people that are on there bring something to the table in terms of their contribution, and that's where the thought process came, where we would expand it from five to seven. So it was more of a question of strengthening it rather than weakening it and getting additional people in the community into that particular committee. So that was the thought process behind it, I think. Bob, would you agree?
Yeah, yeah, I agree. I would recommend we pass this on first reading, and then next month, you can bring back a recommendation.
Sounds good.
Those term limits. Is there a second?
Second.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, I'm opposed.
Okay. Pass four to one. Request to plant a memorial decorative tree at the town hall in memory of Deputy Babcock.
In recent weeks, we've been approached by friends of Deputy Marshal Toby Babcock to place a small decorative ornamental tree in the lawn of the town hall, and then below that, they would ask to place a memorial stone that would be flat to the ground, nothing that would be seen from the roadway. I personally have no objections with it. We've approached Janice Brown, a member of the Tree Board. They are also in favor of, obviously, planting additional trees in the community as a benefit to all of us. It would be no cost to the town. Obviously, we would have eight-one-one contacted before the tree would be planted, and the proposal would be to plant it on the western portion. As you come out, the front door of the town hall would be to your right, somewhere in that lawn area there. And again, it would be a small ornamental tree, like a flowering tree, that would add to the town hall. So my recommendation is, I would recommend that the council consider it, and if given permission, I'll move forward, contacting the friends.
I'll make that motion.
I second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Haas Engineering invoice approval. John?
So earlier in the year, we all agreed that we were going to apply for a second, what they call the second call of the CCMG. As you may recall, we had a CCMG on the first call this prior year, meaning the year that we're in, in January of two thousand twenty-two. We were not able to be successful with that application, because the prior clerk had the paperwork not filed on time for the prior year, so we were, we were not able to be successful with that application. So what we did was, we applied for the second call, and we authorized Haas to proceed with the engineering work for that second call. We have not, as of today, heard from, at least in my knowledge, have not heard back from Indot. That's very atypical. Usually, we should have heard by early in October, and we're already in November. So we may not hear from them, or hopefully, we'll hear from them, but at any rate, they, we authorized them to proceed with the engineering and the bidding, or not the bidding, but the application process for the CCMG for that second call. That invoice is now in the clerk's office, I believe, Tim. It's, I think it was sent around to us in the packet from Deanna. It's a total of eleven thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars. So I guess we're asked to approve that invoice at this point. I want to also mention that there are some additional invoices that may be coming in for some work from two thousand twenty for the stop seventeen drainage work. That can come out of the Stormwater Fund. That was also approved, actually, two years ago when we did that. That was back in two thousand twenty. I think Haas' invoicing will be in here shortly, if I'm not mistaken, for that work, and that's in the neighborhood of six thousand. But again, that will come out of the Stormwater Fund. On the CCMG, that's essentially going to have to come out of one of the funds, I think, in the transportation, I'm assuming, which is what we've done before.
John, what was that, eleven thousand?
I'm sorry, Mary, it's eleven thousand five seventy-five. It was actually in your packet. If you look in your packet, there's a copy of that invoice.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Health insurance renewal proposal.
In recent weeks, I've been in several conversations with our healthcare manager, that being General Insurance. Currently, our town provided health benefits for our employees is through Anthem, Blue Cross, Blue Shield. General Insurance has gone out into the marketplace. They have looked at alternative providers for the health insurance for our town employees. They have met a considerable price increase from United Healthcare when comparing to the current plan that we have with Anthem, Blue Cross, Blue Shield. Before I get into the actual numbers, I want to explain a couple of things that kind of cover how this increase is coming about, more or less nationwide, when you look at healthcare benefits. Overall, General Insurance said that they predicted approximately a fifteen percent across-the-board increase in health insurance. Many of these increases are post-COVID. Many were expected to take place in two thousand twenty-one. However, they are seeing these increases now taking effect in two thousand twenty-three. It is a market correction in the healthcare industry. They indicated that smaller groups have seen increases up to forty percent in their monthly premiums. Many of these explanations are because many individuals have waited during COVID and have put off elective surgeries, getting their annual wellness checks. Many people just had not been going to their physicians during COVID. Now that COVID is somewhat behind us, many individuals have ran out, had elective surgeries done, have started back having their annual wellness checks, and then therefore, the healthcare providers across the country are seeing all these bills now hitting them at one time. So the numbers, currently, the town pays thirteen thousand nine hundred and fifty-six dollars and fifteen cents is our current monthly premium. The town pays eighty percent of that. The employees are responsible for twenty percent. The renewal is to, the recommendation is to renew and stay with Anthem, Blue Cross, Blue Shield. We would see a sixteen-point-one-four percent increase. That would be an increase of two thousand two hundred and fifty-two dollars and eighty-three cents a month. Of that, the employees would be picking up four hundred and fifty dollars and fifty-seven cents. So the monthly increase to the town would be approximately eighteen hundred and two dollars and twenty-six cents. The effect to the employees, the employees will see. The effect to the employees, the employees will see an increase in their deductible. For a single individual, their deductible will go from $2,800 to $3,000. And the deductible for a family will go from $4,600, I'm sorry, $5,600 to $6,000. They'll see a $400 increase in the deductible. There is a plan, if you look to column three from the left, there is a plan out there that has a 4% decrease. However, that would put a lot of burden onto the employees. It would be an 80-20 split when you look at the overall cost of the plan, where the plan they have now is 100% covered, and then the deductibles are considerable amount as well. When speaking to Michael O'Donoghue today with General Insurance, he and I both agreed that the recommendation would be to go with the renewal, and that being the $16,208.98 a month. Now, they do offer dental and vision, which we do not currently provide for our employees. They had priced that for us. I'll just share those numbers with you tonight. For dental, the monthly premium would be approximately $645.79. For the vision would be $94.02, for a total premium of $739.81. And then of that, the employees would pay $147 by contributing to those plans. And then it would be an overall increase to the town of $592.81 approximately a month. So that would be in addition to the already $1,802 that the town is going to see as an increase. We do not provide that currently. However, we can offer both dental and vision to the employees where they provide a 100% contribution on their behalf. However, we would need a minimum of five employees to participate for that plan to be active. So that is all the information I have.
The dental, the dental numbers are on?
I'm sorry?
The dental numbers are not on here, right?
No, they are not. I can send that to you in a separate email. I just received that, I believe it was yesterday, but I can send that to you. I have them printed out here if you'd like to look at them, but otherwise, there's about eight pages of dental and vision. I just kind of broke down a synopsis for you tonight.
We need to get this decided pretty quickly because you got.
Healthcare has to be decided before November 16th, so we definitely have to vote on the healthcare tonight. The dental and vision would have to be decided no later than December 1st, because they are different providers, aside from Anthem, Blue Cross, Blue Shield. So my recommendation at this time would be that the council vote on the renewal continuing with the services of Anthem, Blue Cross, Blue Shield.
Mark, I'm sure you said this, but the current does not include dental, correct?
It does not. The only portion of vision is that the employees are allotted a vision exam. Other than that, there are no other vision benefits, and you are correct, no dental benefits at all. There's no dental plan attached.
So it's apples to apples between that and the renewal?
Yes, except for the increase, obviously, in the overall premium and the
Yes, I understand.
increase in the deductibles.
I understand.
All right, so I would make a motion that we offer our employees the same insurance they have now. That's the renewal one. And just to put this thing to bed, I'd say, let's not offer the dental or the eye. That's my motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion? All favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
That sounded unanimous to me.
Dr. Lemay, just for clarification, if by chance we have five employees that would be interested, there would be no objections, obviously, 100% contribution on their behalf. And then I would follow up and notify the council of such information. I sent an email to all full-time employees today asking if they are interested. If I hear back from five or more, I'll bring that information forward at your executive and special meeting coming up.
And so the contribution for the dental and vision is 100% from the employees, right?
That would be correct.
Then I have no objection. Anybody have an objection?
No. Do we have a handle on how many people are taken, individual versus family, roughly?
Yes.
I mean, that's not important right now. I just.
Individual employees, you have seven. Employee and spouse, you have two.
Oh, I see it there. Okay, I see it there.
Yep, it'd be the breakdown on the far-left column near the bottom.
I'm sorry, I missed it. I see it now. Okay.
Total, right now, you have a total of, let's see, 11 employees on there. So that's on the current plan.
Okay. Christensen CPAs and Consulting Professional Service Agreement for Grant Research. So we paid them, I believe, $8,000. We've had two meetings with them where they gave us a list of grants, most of which didn't apply to us. And now we're getting an invoice from them. For them to continue, they want $2,000 more. I feel like dealing with Christensen was a mistake. I hate to put more money into the process. I think Christensen is an organization that deals with companies and not so much municipalities. I think we were their effort to dip their toe in the water with municipalities, and I frankly think we should probably not continue to work with them. I just feel like we're being strung along. Other comments?
I would agree. I called them early on and asked them what they had done for us, and they couldn't really answer the question. And they followed up that conversation with another invoice. So I've had, early on, I've had trouble identifying what benefit they brought to us, so I would agree with Dr. Lemay.
So I'd make a motion that we not, what, pay their invoice, I guess? Yep.
I second it.
All favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Sounded unanimous. Accounting costs for software updates?
So at the Budget and Finance Committee meeting, and I don't know, Tim, you want to talk about this as well, but essentially, at the Budget and Finance Committee, we were made, we have a Budget and Finance Working Group that met after the Budget and Finance Committee meeting. And we talked about lots of different accounting issues, some of the upgrades that we're trying to accomplish. And in particular, there's some Civic software, which is the vendor for our software program, that has two updates that we need to do if we want to continue down the road of increasing our accuracy on the payroll and the invoicing and some of the other things. Essentially, what we're asking for tonight is a not-to-exceed approval of about a $10,000 expenditure for software upgrades. And I don't know if you have any more detailed information in that.
No, that was, we were going to ask for approval not to exceed $10,000. We don't think we'll come up to the $10,000, but just to be safe. But one of the things they would do is they would come and do an analysis of our current situation and recommend how they might augment it with new features that they have. They have a water module, a utility module. They can help convert us to ACH so that we get away from this positive pay system. Positive pay, it means every day, Every Day Horizon sends me an email, and I have to approve the checks that were sent to various vendors to avoid the theft that we had on a couple of different occasions earlier this year. So it would streamline the process. Maybe it would bring down our labor costs when everybody gets on board with using it. And it's certainly something to look at. And that's why we sort of thought getting them in here to do an evaluation, which comes at a cost, and then possibly purchasing a couple of their add-ons, assuming that we agree that we need them after their evaluation.
So the Budget and Finance Working Group did vote to come to the council and ask for these expenditures after we reviewed those with Tim and Helen?
John, did you say the budget and finance, because I attended the budget and finance, and that didn't come up at the meeting?
This was our working group afterwards.
You said that you were going to come to the council to get that approved.
That's what we're doing right now.
I know, but I don't remember you bringing that up at the regular meeting.
Well, that's because we discussed it at the working group. So what we're asking to, so what we've done.
So was everybody that's on the budget and finance included in the working meeting?
No.
Oh.
We can't do that, because if we do that, we have to have a public meeting. So we made a decision a couple of Budget and Finance meetings ago to have a working group that would delve deeper into the accounting information so that we could get some action plans put together. So we actually have five areas that we're trying to make progress on. Things like a new payroll entry data system, which we're going to hold off until the early part of 2023. We didn't think we wanted to tackle that right now. And there's also some potential for, when we discussed the email system a little while ago, there's some potential for a much more interactive billing process for the water side as well. We're going to hold off on those efforts until after the first of the year. But the thought was, in order to help us get into the 21st century, we would have these new modules, or at least have the potential for these new modules. And as Tim says, we hope not to have to spend that much, but if we can keep the ball rolling, we can get Civic to give us this review and keep them motivated to keep going down the road of getting these systems upgraded. So that's what essentially.
Who's included in that, who's included in that budget and finance planning thing?
I was there. It was Helen, Tim, and John.
Okay. So why wasn't Laurel?
We just made a group of people to handle some of these things. It's not exclusion by any means. We can't have more than two councils.
Well, I mean, she's not a councilperson.
I don't remember Laurel. It seemed informal. We finished the Budget and Finance meeting, and some of the attendees got up and said goodbye, and then a few of us hung around and did the workshop. So I don't know if Laurel wasn't invited or had to leave or not, but.
Yeah, the idea was to have the individuals that have a vested interest in what's going on with the accounting, meaning Helen, who's working on the accounting internally for Tim, Tim, who's the clerk treasurer, myself and Mike, who are two representatives from the council, and then Mark as well, who's the town administrator. So that was the intent. We weren't looking for a larger committee or more individual input. Essentially, we wanted to just get down to the nitty-gritty and deal with the work that we had to be done. So that's essentially.
Up to $10,000, just the analysis, or is that the software update?
This, essentially, right now, it's the software updates and the analysis. That's why we're going for a not-to-exceed.
So, but we would include other people for the analysis, correct?
No, that's not the intent. The intent is to have the players that are involved that have a direct relationship with the accounting and the Budget and Finance Committee to meet on a regular basis. Laurel doesn't have any professional involvement, as far as I'm concerned, in what goes on with Tim's office or the council's responsibilities. As far as I know, she was involved with the Water Department early on, and I don't discourage her from continuing to be involved with the Budget and Finance. But right now, we just have to get our hands dirty and get some of these things accomplished. So that's what we're about. I don't think adding, I don't know what Mike feels about it, but adding more individuals to that committee, I don't think will help us.
Well, the other thing, Mary Lou, that we didn't really know we were going to be talking about accounting systems before we sat down in our working group. And as we continued to have discussions with Helen, she was pointing out issues that, quite frankly, we've kind of kicked the can down the road a little bit on some of our systems. And so then as we, there was two or three or four items that came up in that discussion for the first time, I might add, where we decided we should delve deeper into it, and that's where we established that up to $10,000 as a possible cost of the software. But really, that was not an agenda item for our working group when we sat down. We really, we kind of morphed into that discussion.
I think it started with the fact that the lit tax was not being calculated properly in payroll. And we had contacted Civic, and they said, oh, well, your system, you're passed to do two different updates. And then we got more involved with Civic about, well, what more can your software do for us? Is our current program being taxed with the amount of use that we give it and the expectations we have for it? And Civic said, well, we can do this, that, and the other. And we frankly didn't know any of that stuff and gathered that information and then brought it to the workshop. So it was really never an agenda item. But in any regard, the intent is to improve the system and identify potential improvements that may exist, and then come back and recommend them.
We just felt that the public meetings weren't getting everything accomplished that we needed to get accomplished. We had to delve a little deeper into the details and that the people that we just named were willing to do that, and that's what we've been, we've met a couple of times so far.
We need a motion.
I thought I made it already. The motion would be to allow the clerk's office to spend approximately not to exceed $10,000 on software updates with Civic.
I'd second that motion.
Any discussion? All favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next agenda item, the executive session. I'd like to suggest that we have an executive session sometime next week. That's convenient for everybody. Two issues to be discussed are the Perry-Bartlett lawsuit and employee issues. It also suggests that we schedule a regular meeting to follow, when hopefully we'll have the information on the SCBA equipment. I'll make that motion. Any discussion?
What date, what date are we talking about?
Pardon?
What date are we talking?
I hope it's not Thanksgiving.
Uh, no. Is that this week? It's next week, right?
Mm-hmm. Because we have to have.
What day works?
I want to clarify a few things.
We have to have 48 hours.
First of all, the exec session will be pending litigation that's threatened in writing and employee performance. So those are the valid reasons, right? And two, you said a regular meeting, but that'd be a special, a special meeting
Special meeting.
that would follow the executive session.
Right.
Can I make a comment about that? I'm advised to not discuss the issue that you mentioned. However, it is not a lawsuit currently.
So let me clarify, because that's why I suggested it's pending or threatened in writing. That is a lit. Also, I've been in touch with the insurance carriers, the attorney, Bliss McKnight, specifically Betty Knight, who's been retained by the insurer, who in name represents the clerk's office. And, you know, I've suggested to her to, if we have this meeting and it involves anything that has to do with Mr. Perry, that she would probably be in attendance as well, which, again, there shouldn't be any objection to that. But my recommendation to you and her, I'm passing along, I'm speaking for her, her recommendation for him would be that, you know, I don't want to put him in a position where he is somehow compromising insurance coverage and, which pays for the representation on that threatened matter at this point.
Doesn't change the reasons that you can have that meeting and for the reasons stated.
Okay.
Do we want to try to have it later this week? I know we have, what, 48 hours?
48 hours.
48 hours. So would Thursday work if, does that mean Tuesday, put the note out Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday?
Yep, that would work.
Would that work?
Well, yeah, because we'd be talking.
I don't know if anybody can make it, but I'm just saying, Thanksgiving week might be a little problematic.
Yep.
What time are we talking about?
How about Thursday at 6:00 PM?
What time?
6:00 PM.
I have a conflict. I can't do it.
Okay, how about Friday?
Any daytime availability?
Sure.
Friday, anytime.
Friday is the building commission.
Oh, that's right.
That'd be a long day.
I mean, can we do it earlier, on the 17th?
Or what about Monday around the APC meeting? Prior to, Monday's APC, so. But are you around Monday?
That would give us plenty of time to announce.
Mr. Coke is not, yeah, because he's for in-persons.
Timeout. It sounded like Mike was our problem child on Thursday, right? But you said earlier.
Can we do it earlier? Yeah.
What about daytime Thursday? Does anybody have a problem with daytime Thursday?
What about 4:00 Thursday?
I can't. I have another commitment on Thursday.
All day or just 4:00?
Just in the afternoon, just like 4:00.
How about 2:00, 1:00, noon?
I can do all those.
Okay, how about Thursday, 1:00 PM?
Sounds good.
All right. Chris, can you handle the announcements? I will go ahead and schedule the Zoom.
Thursday at 1:00 PM here, right?
Thursday, 1:00 PM.
Okay.
And then to follow the regular meeting, or not regular meeting, the special meeting.
Oh, after that?
Yep. And given the subjects that we're hoping to discuss at that meeting, regarding the issue of clerk treasurer salary, I would like to make a motion to table. Is there a second?
I second it.
I second it.
Discussion? All favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Was that unanimous?
Yes.
Okay. Salary ordinance. So salary ordinance, we have, question has been raised. We didn't address any salary increases for Meg, Honor, Lou, or Sarah. So I guess the question was, is that intentional? Is that what we want? So I'll open the discussion.
Honor has, in the ordinance, it says you have to be an employee a year.
Okay.
When we did the survey two years ago, the camp director is way off the charts. And so we didn't include her. It was only by neglect. We normally haven't included the building inspector or the part-time person. That's, you know, it's not like they work 20 hours a week. So it was nothing personal. It was just they weren't included.
Okay.
So.
So I guess we're talking Meg and Lou at this point, as far as.
Right, just, and normally, I don't like to use their names. Right, just, and, and normally, I don't like to use their names because it is a public meeting, but yes, the BZA secretary and the building inspector.
Okay. And that was, and so, if they were to be treated the same as everybody else, that was a five percent increase, is that right?
Correct, yes.
All right, well, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we include them in the five percent increase.
Can I ask a question? What was the logic on the other two?
You have to be here a year to get an increase. It's in the ordinance, it's been in there forever.
Okay.
And the other one, if you look at the survey, most camp counselors make about twenty dollars an hour, and ours makes twenty-eight.
Now, she's the director.
She's not a camp counselor, though.
Well, okay, a director.
Director.
If you look at the survey on directors, at one, at, a year ago, it was more than what the police were making, so we did not include that. And it wasn't by, it just hasn't ever been in the part that we include on the salary ordinance, so it isn't anything personal. She does an excellent job.
So, why would we not want to have a uniformly five percent increase across the board? I'm, I'm confused. I understand the Honor situation, but I'm a little confused about the camp director. Seems to me if we're going to be consistent, it ought to be across the board.
That's not my call, whatever you guys want to do.
All right, I'll make a motion that we include Meg. I'm using names again, aren't I? The building commission, not building commission, the APC, no, what is it?
BZA.
Secretary. The building inspector and the camp director in the five percent increase. That's the motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, actually, you probably can't.
Oh, I can't do anything? Okay, never mind.
Is anybody else on?
I'll second it.
All right, all favor say aye.
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 Okay.
So, so the chief and I need to redo the, and Chris Welby, we need to redo the ordinance.
Well, now, we're passing this on first reading, right?
So, yeah, my suggestion to you, because you've tabled an item that might affect that ordinance, is so that you're not reliant on having to have a unanimous council, that you pass it at least on first reading, and then you can amend it if necessary.
Okay.
So, I suggest we pass it on first.
With those changes that you just.
With those changes.
Okay.
Is there a second?
I second it.
All favor say aye.
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 You didn't say aye, did you?
So.
So.
So, the record is going to be that Mr. Waugh recused.
Recused. I formally recuse, and what else am I supposed to say?
Okay, and then you want your directing, the chief and I and Chris to redo the ordinance, correct?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, for second reading.
Okay.
Yep. Okay, clerk treasurer invoice for budget legal expense.
Mr. Perry? Well, there's a line item in the budget for five thousand dollars for 2022, and we have bill for three thousand, two hundred and fifty-six dollars that I need approval to pay.
For your legal expenses?
I, I'm sorry, what?
For your legal expenses.
Yes.
I move we approve it.
Second.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, public comments. Any public comments?
I think we didn't hear the amount of.
Thirty-two hundred dollars.
Number one, congratulations, chief. Oh, sorry.
You're on. No, it was on. Now, it's off.
Anita Remages, twenty-three hundred floramond. It was loud. I'd rather you could hear me than not, and I want to be sure you know my name and address. Halloween trunk-or-treat, also a success, and it also brought many more kids into the neighborhood. We had, we always have a core of kids that come, so it was really nice to see that that core was increased, at least doubled, if not more.
To the homes or to the here? To your house?
Well, yeah, I mean, who came here, came here. So, I wanted to be sure, and I had emailed chief, that we were not getting rid of trick-or-treating because it's fun, and we have many kids in our neighborhood, so it was very nice. I had a question, but I don't think it can come up. I don't know that it will be answered about positive pay. I know that you talked about having to look at that every morning, and I'm just curious how many checks have to be looked at every morning by one of the employees?
Well, every check that we, we send out has to be looked at before it's cashed, so how many is that per day?
Mm-hmm.
Today, there was none.
Just curious.
Friday, there was probably four.
Okay, so this is just something every morning?
It is.
And we had the, you mentioned theft, but there wasn't a mention of the NSF check, so I was just curious. It doesn't seem to, of the employees in your office, it seems that that would be an easy thing. So, I know it was mentioned before 10:00 AM, and now it's been extended to two, so I was just curious. So, it can vary from zero checks to four checks.
Yep.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Great. Anybody on Zoom want to make any comments? If you do, raise your hand. I see no one. If you do, and you don't know how to raise your hand, just start talking. I don't hear anyone either. Council comments? Any council comments? Claims approval.
Bob, are we gonna, are we going to push the deer issue into the future years, or what's our status on that?
So, at, not last meeting, but the meeting before, I asked anybody who wanted to change their mind, either voted for the deer hunt or against the deer hunt, who wanted to change their mind, to let us know. I only heard from two people who wanted to change their minds, who voted against and now wanted to vote for.